All right, we're bringing the the special meeting to into order. Uh, we have David Smith, Rita, uh, Justin and who's there at Town Hall, uh, Jack Casey? And, uh, Ryan Hawk.
Yep.
And
in a minute, sorry, Matt.
Okay, good. All right. So everybody's seen the agenda. We have a lot of ground to cover. Uh, the purpose for today is to agree on recommended changes to the personal board rules and regulations in order to forward them to the town. The candidates for for review and hopefully, uh, approval. So let's start with section two point one on determine term of board members three to three or five years.
That's gonna have to stay three.
Okay, that was an easy one. Then, um, moving on to two point three. Is that everything with that section there, Dave?
Uh, I'm pulling it up now. I think it's the same, um, just to make sure I'm looking. This is the same red line that we had. Basically last meeting, right?
That's correct.
There's not a newer document. Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure I didn't miss like a new document or something. Um, yeah, I think in two point one, that was the only thing. It was just whether it was three or five years.
So we'll strike out five, put three and leave the, uh, the verbiage as we have it there then.
Yeah, I believe that was five and then two years ago, it was reduced to three.
By the town council?
But yeah, town council didn't want it to exceed the amount of time as a council seat.
Gotcha. All right. Moving on to two point three, agree on verbiage and what constitutes a board quorum. So any discussion there?
Yeah, I think this was, these changes were just to reflect the fact that the committee used to be, yeah, it used to be three people. So a quorum was two. And now since the committee's five people, a quorum is is now three. Um, and then there were a couple other minor changes along that line like I think it was, I think one of the changes was instead of two members being able to call a meeting, three members have to call a meeting if it's not the chairperson. That might not be in this section. That might be in a further section, but that's what those changes were.
So yeah, here it is. The the board shall organize each year within 10 days of the appointment of all of its members.
Oh, that's right. That was the other change. Yeah, because it current rules set it as a hard date of January 10th. But I think we ran into issues with that when there was an open seat. Um, and so I, I think this just gives us the leeway to wait for the appointment of the members from, you know, each, um, appointment cycle. If, you know, if town council pushes off the vote for appointing a member until January, then, you know, our organizational meeting doesn't happen until after council appoints that member.
Then three members of the board shall constitute a forum. So can I have a motion to approve this this verbiage?
Oh, do we want to go through it just one by one for each of these? That's fine with me if you want to, yeah.
Well, we need to knock this.
Okay, uh, should we do it for the previous one too? For that to, I'll just make a motion to approve the suggestion to two point one and two point three.
Yeah, that's good. And a second?
I'll second it.
Um, in favor?
Aye, aye.
Those opposed? All right, the eyes have it. Uh, then in section B, the, um, the only change there is a majority of attending members.
Right, right. So that's usually how it works. The way it's worded right now is no matter how many members are at the meeting, you need three votes to pass something. Usually the way it works is as long as you have a quorum, a majority of those members present can usually pass something. Um, you know, we don't have to accept that change, but that's why I I suggested it was so that way you can have a quorum with only three people. And if the meeting is three people, then it takes two people to pass something. The way the ruler is right now, if you had three people that conducted a meeting, all three would have to vote the same way in order for it to pass.
Okay. Are there any objections to this change? All right, well, instead of voting on each one of these, why don't we just move through the document and then we'll, um, make a motion to approve the ones that we don't have objection to, and then we can discuss the other ones at some point. Is that is that satisfactory?
Yeah, that sounds good to me and and I can make changes as we go if we all agree on, you know, modifications as we go.
Okay. And two point six is, uh, this is except for the annual organization meeting, all meetings shall be held either at the call of the chairperson or at the call of three members of the board. That's the one you were talking about before.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not sure why there's not a, I I swear there used to be a line in here that said chairperson or two members of the board. I don't know why that's not in red line. Maybe I'm just misremembering that, or maybe it came from a different section. Um, but in any case, yeah, that's what this change is since we're going from three members to five members. Um, it needs to be a majority of the board members who call a meeting if the chairperson is not the one calling it.
Any objections to this? This change?
Can I just, can the, uh, chief call for a meeting?
That it's not currently allowed. We can, um, I mean, if that's something we can consider, I can add that in. Uh, we could say
The chief could talk to the chairperson and
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Yeah, the chairperson was like, okay, I'll call a meeting for, you know, whatever issue you have.
Okay.
So moving on to three point four, agree on applicant qualifications. This is where it gets sticky.
Uh, I just, I like the application form that Collier uses to some degree. But one of the things, it is complicated and it needs to be, I think, one, two, three, people respond to that better. One, da, 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 or da, 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 or da, 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 when you put it out there, but let's decide what it is first.
Yeah, well, I I forwarded Monday, I forwarded that word document.
Yes, thank you for that. Thank you.
It basically rephrases, it's it's the same as what three point four is right now. It just rephrases it into more plain language. It actually uses almost all the same language. It just rearranges the language.
You mean, you rewrote this? From what it was?
Yeah, yeah, that was on, that was the one I sent on Monday. Um,
Yeah, he says to be eligible at the time of application, you must meet at least one of the following
Right.
of one, two, and three. And so then he he numbers them, just like you said, Rita, and he has have a bachelor's degree.
I see it now. Yeah, I hadn't seen that. Thank you. I printed it, but I didn't. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that is the current requirements, just reorganized with slight tweaking towards, but nothing substantive has changed. Um, you know, just tweaking towards because of the reorganization. Um, and, you know, I was, you know, I was thinking on that. So I did, I did that, and I think we should at least suggest that change so that it's very clear to applicants. Um, and then as to the requirements themselves in the, you know, with the degree, that portion of the requirements. Um, I, I don't, I don't know if if we want to try to decide on changes or if we just suggest to the town because they're the ones who have to discuss it and change it anyway. If we want to just suggest to the town, hey, you should think about changing requirements. Um, I, I just don't know if it's worth all the time that that we would go through. It might be, I'm just throwing this out there. I just don't know if it's worth all the time that we would go through trying to come to what we think are the right requirements when council is just gonna have that same discussion and it's ultimately up to them.
Um, when it says have at least four years of law enforcement experience in the Collier one, they have and completed the police academy and MPO ETC test and be able to be certified under Act one twenty at the time of hiring. Chief, is that part of our, um, four year thing? I mean, does that go along with having four years' experience? Is it automatically part of the four-year experience?
I apologize, Rita. I was, uh, answering a mechanic, but it sounds like you folks were asking if the four years' experience and the Act one twenty would be a hand in hand?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, I would say the four years' experience indicates they already have that Act one twenty and took, you know, and and got a job and worked as an officer already in the Commonwealth. So I would, yeah.
So it doesn't have to be stated in the, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And, uh, I mean, you folks didn't ask, but a couple of things that have been really coming at us in recent years is the option that council might consider whether or not they want to explore doing away with either the college degree. I don't know if you folks know, but Pennsylvania State Police just did that. Um, or the one twenty certification and that would open up a whole new process for us. We haven't had in a long time where you would offer to hire someone and then send them through the academy. It'd probably be a conditional offer, right? That that based on them graduating from the municipal police academy, they would have a job, but if they failed out or what have you, the town would not probably be obligated to keep them employed, something like that. Something council mayor may not ever want to consider. I know other agencies are doing that around us. Uh, doing away with the one twenty, that is.
We talked about, um, them coming in at at a different salary, but that's not something we can deal with here. That would be union issues, right? I mean, how
It's actually negotiated between the town and the officers. You you mean higher or lower salary, Rita, starting?
Yeah, and then encouraging them to go on, you know, as an encouragement offer that that's something I think we decided that was something only you guys could decide with the township.
Yeah, let's just, let's just stick with, um,
Right.
proving the the verbiage for the regulations. That's, that's all we're trying to do here. We're not trying to change the world on this one. Um, so I have, if there's anybody that, uh, has objection to the way that that David has rewritten this and you bring it up now?
No, I like it.
That's fine. I did have a question, uh, for you, uh, chief, is, um, we don't have a current requirement for residents, for police officers to have residents within the township, do we?
Not within the town, Matt. They they do spell out a, a, an area and plus, uh, in the last contract, they got a twenty air mile, um, addendum as well.
Okay.
Yes, not not just in the town limits.
I see resident boundaries, not the, not within, I gotcha.
Yep, absolutely, yeah.
All right. So if everybody's good with that one, um, we'll move on to section three point five and determine online notification issue.
Uh, let me see. Oh, oh. Yeah, that's just, um, that we that we can post for them, that we should post the meetings online. I think John already does that. Um, you know, this says that we post when we have a meeting at Town Hall or other public locations. I'm just clarifying that online counts as a public location.
But shouldn't we, we are listed in the, in the calendar and what we have listed in the calendar is no more true. So residents who might want to attend like they can't depend on the counter. Do we have an actual day that we meet and an actual hour that we meet consistently?
Wait, what are you, Rita, are you saying the online calendar or like a paper calendar?
I'm talking about the paper calendar. I mean, we give out this paper calendar and
Wait a second, wait a second, Rita. What does that have to do, Rita, what does that have to do with the change in three point five?
Well, are you saying that when you say public notice, do you mean public notice of our meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so we had changed the meaning times so often. And I think it's inconsistent to have one thing in the, you know, going out to citizens in January about when we meet and then we change that meeting. If you're gonna do that, um, you're, you're not giving citizens, you know what I'm saying?
This, this section is actually for posting the, uh, jobs for
Oh, for the jobs, not the meeting. Oh, okay. I didn't get that. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So that, that's all this is adding is that they can, they can be posted online essentially. Or that we should post them online.
Right. This is, all this is saying is that we, that posting online is part of the public notification.
Oh, okay.
So is, is everybody good with including online as part of that? All right, good. Um, three point six, decide who gets background checks and when they get them.
Oh, right. So this one is, this relates to you know, only doing the background checks for the top X number of candidates after scoring instead of the way the, the ordinance currently reads, it can be read to require a background check on every applicant. Um, it can also be read in a different way. It's the way it's currently worded is unclear, but it could be read to require a background check of every applicant. Um, and this was the point for discussion where do we want to recommend? Uh, you know, th- this says the town shall conduct a background investigation of the contenders on the certified list of three. I mean, that might be enough to let, to let us do, you know, just the certain number of top candidates. I don't know if we, if we want to try to clarify that.
I, yeah, I, I think they should have they should have a clarification because I remember having a discussion with Chief Hawk last time we went through this is that he was intending only to do the top three because it was just manpower and money intensive and restrictive to do it otherwise.
Could, could we make it something like at the discretion of the chief of police? Because we don't know, sometimes we might be hiring one officer. Someday we might want to hire five officers. So depending on how many applicants you're gonna really hire, depends on how deep you want to go with the background checks. So if we made it at the discretion of the town manager in conjunction, uh, the, the chief of police in conjunction with the town manager, then they could kind of figure out how many they really need to.
If I can make a suggestion on section B of three point six as upon receipt of application, the town should conduct the background investigations of contenders of the certified list of three. What, what if we just put in front of contenders of the selected contenders on the certified list of three? That way, boom, it's it implies that not everyone's getting it, implies that there's a selection process that happens to be a contender and just be done with it.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think the township conducted background investigation of the selected contenders on the certified list of three pursuant to those blah, blah, blah. Um, yeah, the only, the only thing I would add to that is whether or not we would just want to add a sentence to make it very clear saying the number of contenders that will undergo a background check will be determined by the chief in conjunction with town manager, the town manager and or town council or something like that.
There's lawyers speak, just selected says that. Lawyers always pay, charged by the word. No, you know what I'm saying? I think selected covers it, selected contenders because it leaves it you know, open to us and the chief, really.
And folks, it probably doesn't need said, but I'll just throw it out there. Like Mr. Casey said, you know, we may initially i- in the moment need one, so we only do the top three or four or maybe five, depending on, you know, it's every, every situation's different. But then maybe six months down the road, we know we're gonna need a couple more. I will go to my detectives and say, I need you to work that list a little deeper too and do some, do, do additional backgrounds. So whatever you go with here, you know, we're not married to however many I do initially is it, you know? We, we will continue to work the list as the town and the police department needs for background checks.
So what's the exact verbiage that we want to use here then?
Background investigation of the selected contenders on the certified list.
So just be inserting the words selected before the capitalized contenders?
Because then the, you know, if you need to go deeper, you go deeper. They're all selected, all ten are selected. So you can do, um, whatever you need with them.
So are we getting rid of a list of, of three or what?
Yeah, I think that's what we're getting rid of. Upon receipt of an application, the town shall conduct a background investigation of the selected contenders on the certified list, period.
Yeah, let, let me just see something because up in the definitions. Okay, so the certified list of three is actually a defined term. Um, which is why it's capitalized there.
Hmm.
The certified list is not a defined term. Um, and that's where, which section is this? Again, I scrolled up and now I gotta find where we are again, three point six, is that right?
Yeah, we're on three point six right now.
Okay, let me because I scrolled up to the definitions and then lost my place. Uh, um, yeah, so if, if we get we get rid of the of three, then we're we're not referring to a defined term anymore, so we should we should clarify it.
Well, maybe we don't need to even say certified list. Do we? Background investigation of the selected contenders.
Yeah, actually, we can get rid of yeah, and the selected contenders on the certified list of three. The other thing that will clear this up, um, I forgot about this until just now is to delete the lead-in clause upon receipt of an application. That's where the confusion comes in is the ordinance currently says upon receipt of the application, and then it says you conduct the background check on the list of three. If we get rid of upon the receipt of an application, um, I think adding selected is still good because it clarifies that you're not starting the, the background checks until the, the people are actually selected on the list. Um, but that would be the other change is just to delete that upon receipt of an application and just start the town shall conduct a background investigation.
Yes. Less is better.
Okay, so from there, we still probably need some kind of, um, defined term reference.
I, I, I would say we leave the the reference to the certified list of three because then what this requires, that's all that this requires is a background check on the top three. But chief can always do more. You know, that's just what this requires would be doing the background check on those top three. Um, but the police department can always do more background checks. It's just not required.
May I make a
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. There are background checks and then there's background checks. In other words, when you get your initial application, you probably want to review it for certain accuracies and and not go as deep. And then when you get your certified list, you probably want to, gonna go into detail about what you're looking for. In other words, you, you might want to just make sure that there, there's no records against any of your police officers that are, are your applicants. And then afterwards, you go into your more depth where you go and you interview people, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I think there's really two kinds of background checks, if I'm not wrong.
Jack, I'm gonna leave it to you and council to figure that part out. Um, because the way the ordinance is currently written, they don't separate it that way. Um, I mean, if, if, if people on the call want to try to tackle that, we can. Um, but I know chief does the preliminary, you know, quick search of the records. Uh, they do that for every applicant. If I'm not mistaken, right, chief, you do like the basic, yeah, yeah, like the docket check essentially.
Right, review the application and such, he absolutely, you know, uh, turnover stones, you know, the obvious ones, you're right, Dave. And I also think that that speaking to the top three is also kind of hit, um, striking at the civil service rules probably without having Falco here. I realized I didn't know he wasn't one either. Um, like you said, David, if you leave it in there, you know, in order for us to hire one, we do have to explore three candidates, so.
So I think that go ahead, Justin. Okay, so just very quickly, so in, uh, part B, section three point nine, general examination requirements, and then we're gonna get there in uh, section D of that background investigations, it gives more color far as what we're doing. Prior to being considered for appointment certified list of three, the top scoring applicants will undergo a complete background investigation. Should just be like the selected top scoring against, right? And it says, although requirement only sufficient number of top scoring candidates necessary for consideration was determined by the board will need to have a background investigation performed. So it kind of gives that hedge language that we were talking about. As long as we put selected in there, that way they know it's, it's, it's a curated number.
Wait, Justin, what, I'm sorry, what section were you looking at there when you were just reading that?
Three point nine, I think you said.
Yeah, three point nine, part D, uh, and it's on page fourteen, I believe.
Yeah, background investigation prior to being considered for appointment on the certified list of three, the top scoring applicants will undergo a complete background investigation as outlined in section three point six point Bravo and section three point one five. Although a requirement only a sufficient number although a requirement only sufficient number of top scoring candidates necessary for consideration as determined by the board will need to have a background investigation formed.
Okay, that last sentence to me, that kind of like clarifies, we, we make the, the termination as far as like the council and, and chief, they make the determination of how many? Right? They have that full background.
Oh, oh, okay, that's actually perfect. Um, if that's the case, I would say up, up in three point four then where, where we say the selected, you know, the selected, uh, candidates. I think we just add a reference to this section, to section three point nine D. The selected candidates, you know, um, I, I have to figure out the exact wording, but the selected candidates according to section or the candidate selected under section three point nine D by the board. Does that make sense?
Does.
Yeah, so in your, um, revised three point four, where would you put that?
Um, here, that'd be, um, Ryan, can you let me share my screen?
I'll throw hosting duties to you, Dave, unless you know an easier way.
Oh, I, I do not know an easier way.
Okay, maybe you can share your screen now.
Yeah, oh, geez. Okay, Zoom is different than Teams and sharing. Okay, I think this is the right the right screen. Okay, D C B with a crossed out. Okay, so I would say, um, that, I, I gotta fix this.
So that's three point that's three point six, I think.
This is three point four, oh, three point six. I'm sorry, yeah, not three point four. I meant, I meant three point six. Um, so a background of the investigation of the contenders on the certified list of three.
Uh, you want to put selected, select in front of contenders?
Yes.
Now, here, what I'm saying is, um, what section were we just reading from? Was that three point one four?
We were just reading from three point nine.
Three point nine, okay. So selected pursuant to section sections, three point nine. I don't know how we do it, if it's just a is it a period for the D?
Yes, I believe so. Three point nine's down.
And there we go. So and that, that looks weird. Well, I'll leave it like that. So that's all I'm saying here is instead of putting the selected in front of contenders to make it clear who we're referring to the contenders on the certified list of three selected pursuant to and then it cross references section three point nine D, which is what we just read. And I don't know what section three point one four is off the top of my head. My guess is that's the scoring.
Three point one fours above is I guess, I guess it was down.
Oh, wait. Oh, three point one four is, is wrong. Yeah, that, that's not the, um, I think that must be an old, an old cross reference, that three point one four. As long as we refer to three point nine D, I think, I think that covers it. And so if I get rid of this, And so if I get rid of this. There. And so what this says is the contenders on the list of three. Selected pursuant to section three point nine D. So this refers to three point nine D and then three point nine D says. Three point nine D says background investigation. Prior to be considered for to for appointment. It's the number of of folks selected by the board. That, you know, the number of the number of people that the board. Thinks we need to do the background investigation on. Actually, I shouldn't, I shouldn't. Does any additional, okay, yeah, that's just clarifying language, so.
Yeah, you want to capitalize your D on that thing, um.
Yeah, I left it lowercase because.
Yeah, that's a lowercase, cause it's lowercase, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there might be, eventually, we might want to do a sweep for little minor stylistic things like that, but. I wouldn't worry about it today. So that would be my. Given that discussion, thanks, Justin, for finding that, I didn't realize that was down there. That that eases my concern of of just using the word selected without like a further reference, because now we have the reference.
All right, um, I would say that we vote on this one right now, because it's of all the discussion, the complications. Can I get a motion to approve this um language for section three point nine? Motion for three point six. Three point six, thank you.
Uh, I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. All right, eyes have it, section three point six is approved as we've just indicated. June, do you have those changes or do you need David to send to you?
Need to send them to her.
Yeah, I'm I'm tracking them all, this this document I'm updating as as we discuss. So I will circulate this at the end of the meeting to everybody.
Okay, sounds good. So let's move on to three point one five, we're ensure this is in agreement with section three point six.
Point. Oh, are we, we're skipping ahead a little bit?
Yeah. We may be.
Oh, oh, because there's the whole, oh, oh, that's, that's why there's the um. That's why there's the reference to three point one five was because that's the. That's what the reference up here where it used to refer to um. I think I think this spells it out good enough, quite honestly, but. Should we add a reference here to say sections three point nine D and three point one five, that's where the confusion came in. That way, we're also referencing, we're also referencing the specific background check section.
So you're gonna put in three point one five into the in section three point six then?
Yeah, yeah. In in section three point six, just to add that. It did, because three point one five. And and I guess we do investigation on the top scoring applicants, okay, and we we already discussed, we don't need to. We don't need to specify a number. So this is consistent.
I just want you to read it and see if you agree with me.
Okay. All right, then um. Moving on to three point nine, determine testing process.
Wait, the the only thing, Matt, should I make a motion just to approve that additional change then? Or should we just? I'll just move to a, yeah, I'll move to a. Uh, to to add the language to instead of just writing in section three point six. Adding the reference to section three point one five, which is the background check section.
Uh, yeah, in in section three point one six, you're adding. You're adding um, taking out three point one four and adding three point one five instead.
Is that? Yes.
Correct. Do you have a second for that motion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I. Oppose? All right, I have it. All right, so then um going on to three point nine, determine testing process.
So all of this stuff up here stays the same. And then. This, so for these two paragraphs, I just switched the order because that's the order that they happen in. It it was weird that they were reversed, um, I just switched physical agility and written examination here. So that it follows the actual flow of how the tests go.
All right, so we're looking at um the testing process will be as follows, subparagraph A. Physical agility test, those candidates passing. The physical agility test as outlined in section three point one one. Will qualify to take the the written examination. Is that accurate?
Yeah, three point one one here is the physical agility. And then three point one two is the written examination. So that goes from physical.
In that order.
Yeah.
Everybody good with that, the change in that language? Yes.
Yes, that's good.
Then written examination in subparagraph B. Those candidates passing the written examination as outlined in section three point one two will qualify to take. The oral examination.
Yeah, so same thing, just physical test to written exam to oral exam.
Everybody good with that language? Yes. All right, then we'll move on to. Section three point one finalize how we will score the oral exams.
Yeah, three point one zero, this is for the over the overall um. Score, so this changes it from. An overall score out of a hundred points to an overall score out of two hundred points. Keeping the weighting the same between the oral and written exam.
Right, as we discussed previously, agnostium. Right, so I'm multiplying the sum of the weighted written examination score and weighted final oral examination grade by two. With composite score total. Then down below that in the paragraph, the final composite score is out of two hundred possible points. Any objections to this this change?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on. Uh, three point one two determine the lowest passing score for the written examine, written exam. So we're changing it from eighty percent to seventy percent. Is there, are there any objections to say changing to seventy percent? I know objections, then um then we need to make sure. In the section three point one three, workout language for veterans preference and ensure percentages match. What we decided in section three point one two also make. Make sure example scores are correct. So.
Yes. That's further down um. And yeah, that's, that's basically just making sure in all of these subsequent scoring sections. That wherever it says a minimum score of eighty, we just change it to seventy. Um, as long as we do, as long as we do the same change for um. For section three point one three, moving from eighty to seventy percent.
Right, and there's actually other sections we need that do that too, um, and we'll cover those. Um, but you also have some other things that here in three point one three. It says um, the board shall administer the oral examination, the highest. Twelve applicants who have attained a passes. The passing scores of seventy percent or greater in the written examination and any person possessing a veterans preference right. Who has achieved a passing score on the written examination. Whether or not among the twelve highest scoring applicants to achieve the passive score of the exam of the exam.
Yeah, that's state law, this just clarifies. That this part here where it says and any person. That just clarifies that it's the top twelve plus anyone who. Who has the veterans preference who also passes.
Right, so they get uh ten points added to their score and. I believe that's.
Yeah, and that's, that's a little bit later, this, this is just clarifying to say. That the, basically that this is twelve plus.
Um, okay, gotcha, so in other words, it doesn't matter whether they were in that twelve or not, they get ten points added to the score if they. They fall in into the range and they're, then they they're in, and if not, then they're not.
Well, this is even before that, this one is. Usually, no matter how many people pass the written exam. You're only giving the oral exam to twelve applicants. This is just clarifying what state law is, is that you have to give the oral. Oral exam to twelve applicants plus any veterans who get a passing score, yeah. So this is, this is before the ten points get added in. This is just making it to the oral exam round essentially. But it's required by state law, and this is just a clarification of what this sentence says. Cause when I first read it.
Yeah. Any objections to this change? All right, um, what about the the second change, additional members may also attend. Any oral interviews and be part of the scoring process so long as they attend all interviews.
This one, I couldn't remember if we discussed. This or not, or whether this was something we wanted to change, I I couldn't remember where we were on it, so I just flagged it. Um, I I don't know if we wanted to require. Interview, interviewers to be at every interview in order to score candidates.
That. That's how it was, wasn't it?
They have to be, because there's no way you can, you, there's no way you can keep a level playing field if you're only there for. One or two sessions and not all of them.
But David and I were online when uh we couldn't, I mean, initially we couldn't and we couldn't be present, so. Are you going to allow that? We were not allowed to score from our online. Um, stance on the. Last couple interviews. And I just wondered if you would keep it that way.
I think it's important to be uh there present, because you you miss so much if you're not. Not there present, looking at someone.
But then you need to wait until somebody can be present, there should be at least three people at um. At every, you know, that's three out of five, so just. I I think that needs to to be, so you can't, if the person can't be there, then you have to make other arrangements, I think that's. Just fair to the applicant as well as to the process.
Reed, I'm I'm not understanding what you're saying.
Well, we. We couldn't be there in person. And we just did it online, listened, but. We should, you should rearrange it so that. Three people can be there because out of five, three people should be present. At the, you know what I'm saying, at the interview, even though we were online, we couldn't score, so it didn't.
So Reed, are you saying? People should be allowed to attend virtually. But there should be three people in person. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yes.
Um, I think we should leave the the door open for, for people attending by by video. Because what what my worry is, is otherwise. The the interview process will just take forever. Trying to get all five people physically in the room.
I don't think, I think you should have a minimum of three interviewers, you shouldn't have to have all five. Uh, people can.
No, three.
But what Reed is saying is that you have the three interviewers in the room as a minimum. But then the other two board members can attend by video.
They can attend by video but not have voting privileges at that point, they're just attending.
Well, and and that's the part where. Because then i- if you can't, what I'm worried about is if you attend by video. And that means that you can no longer score. That the interview process will take forever. Um, because for example, I I wanna be a scorer. But I might not be able to make. The interviews if they're, you know, if they're done during the week like we did this last round. But then if you're trying to work around all five people's schedules in order to be there in person. That interview schedule could take forever, and I, what I'm worried about is that's gonna slow the process down so much. That. You know, that it's gonna take forever trying to coordinate all five personnel board members if they want to score. To be at every interview.
And so many interviews now are done online, I mean. It's, it's the way. Businesses are doing it as well, so I I think it's. It works, I guess, I don't know.
So let's put up to vote. Um, kind of a motion to it's um on this one.
Um, do you want, do you want me to? Try to come up with proposed language or just vote on kind of the idea?
Vote on the idea of whether we should allow um interviews on. You know, to to score interviews remotely or not.
Okay, what I would move is that. And and I'll figure out, this will not be the language, this is the idea. Um, oh, sorry, I just saw that Amy's in the waiting room. Um, I'll move. To. In order for to score. An interview has to be present either in person or online for every interview. And for every interview, there has to be a minimum of three interviewers in person. So each interview must have at least three interviewers in person. The other people can attend online. And in order to score. You have to attend all interviews either in person or online.
Right, but the actual interviewee must be present. In.
Yeah.
In the room, yeah, that that's important, I don't think they could be online.
Hey, guys, I'm so sorry I'm late, I had an emergency here, someone was in my office, I. It wasn't the kind of thing I could just say. Get out, I need to join me. So, sorry.
That's okay.
Hey, Amy, we're on um section. Was it?
Yeah.
Three point one three, and we're trying to decide, um, we're voting on, uh. We're gonna vote on. Whether we should allow people to um. To watch the, to be able to score the interviews remotely. Or not. And do I have somebody to second the motion that David just proposed?
Oh, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amy, do you, do you want kind of the read in on on what this is?
Yeah, yeah, just briefly, what?
So the the motion is sort of in three point one, section three point one three, I'm sharing it on the screen. The motion is that, and this isn't the language, we're. Deciding the idea right now and I'll, I'll draft language accordingly if it's approved. But the idea is that. In order for um a personnel board member to score an interview. They must attend all interviews.
Yeah.
Um, but they can attend either in person or remotely. But for every interview. Um, at least three board members must be present in person. So a- and the interviewee must be present in person, so. For each interview, the interviewee has to be present in person. And at least three board members have to be present in person. And then in order to vote. A board member must attend all interviews in a round. Um. But they can attend either in person or remotely. So in other words, by attending an interview remotely, they don't lose their ability to to score the candidates. All candidates.
Oh, I see, so there can be more than three scoring as long as there are three physically present.
Yeah, the three physically present would just be the requirement. To conduct the interview essentially. But then for scoring, all five board members could score as long as they attended each interview either in person or remotely.
Okay, and just a procedural question, is someone keeping track of what has been decided throughout?
Yes, yeah, I'm I'm tracking it here.
Okay.
And Janice as well.
Okay, yeah, I.
And I'll circulate it after the meeting, Amy, I'll circulate. To everyone, all the changes that we approve, I'll circulate after the meeting.
All right, thank you, um, I I think the most important part is that. You can't vote on someone without having seen everyone else, right, you're comparing. All the candidates. So, okay.
So um. I'll just take another um vote on this, everybody in favor of this motion, say, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, what what was the motion?
The one you just explained.
Yeah, the one I just went through.
Okay, aye.
Yep, see you later, Justin.
Bye, Justin.
Opposed? All right, motion passes, David, do you want to um? Wanted to start making language that uh.
Yeah.
For that.
Must be. Physically present for each oral, oral examination, to sit for the oral examination. Uh, um, additional members may also attend any oral interviews. In person or. Virtually, and be part of the scoring process so long as they attend all interviews. Either in person or. Virtually, does that capture it?
I think that captures the essence of what we just voted on.
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
Was, was Falco unable to attend, I just noticed he's not here.
Right, Falco did not show up, we're not sure why, he did not show up, but he, he did not.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I um. In section three point one six, three point, or excuse me, four point six, four point seven and four point eight. Uh, we just need to ensure that seventy percent is indicated everywhere else.
Correct.
Four point, sorry Matt, which sections were those?
Uh, so, three point, the rest of three point ones, well, three point one six, section four point six. Four point seven, four point eight, we need to make sure that seventy percent is indicated, not eighty percent.
Okay, so three point one six is good, four point six you said was the next one?
Four point six, four point seven and four point eight.
Four point six, uh, seventy percent, seventy percent. Four point seven, seventy percent, seventy percent, four point eight, seventy, was four point eight the last one?
Four point eight was the last one.
Okay, those are all consistent at seventy percent.
Okay, all you had to do is accept all those changes and that should be good. Uh, then in three point one four, determine when we, we need to add veterans preference point.
We add them now at the end, is that correct?
Before calculation of the, oh, oh, that's just um, that's just a clarification.
Clarification.
Because we def, yeah, because we, up in the scoring section. We define, actually, that's, that's a note I think I had to um, to Falco. The final composite score is out of two hundred points, plus any, okay, so the final composite score. For each candidate.
Yeah, it looks like that last bullet, adding any preference points, that still happens at the end.
Yeah.
It does happen in the end, and it, and I think that's according to the way the law's written, we're just clarifying it here.
Yeah, the only, so um, multiplying the sum, okay, here it is, uh. The weighted composite total score. That's the, that's the term that we have to refer to for clarity, um. Wait, oh, this is when, this, actually, this sentence here that I added. This just says um, that they have to get their information, the proof of. Of service and honorable discharge, they have to get that to us before we calculate the final score. So like if we score candidates and they haven't gotten it to us yet, they don't get the preference points, that's all the, that's what this red line here is. Yeah, okay, and then here, this is where it says, when we add it, which is to the weighted composite score, so that means. After we make the scale out of two hundred points, that's when they get the ten points added on. But that's, that's what we already had, this, that's all this section says is, in order to get those ten points. You've gotta get us that proof before we finish the scoring process. That way we're, it's just not, we're not leaving it open ended. You know, for, for somebody saying, oh yeah, yeah, I'll get it to you, I'll get it to you. Um, and then we're just sitting there waiting for, you know, a month, because they haven't gotten it to us.
Everybody good with that, uh, that change?
Yep.
All right.
Let me just check, let me just check one thing, um. Yeah, these are all, these scores are all um. Seventies, I just wanted to make sure that these changes were also seventies.
Yeah, I went through the document and looked at everywhere that, that those changes have been made in the.
Okay, you didn't, you didn't notice any that I missed or anything?
Didn't notice them, no.
Okay, if I see any on the way, I'll fix them, but I think I caught them all.
But I did say for uh, section three point one three, we needed to make sure the examples were all the same.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the examples are correct.
Yeah, I, I updated these, so I know this, this example is, or both of these examples are correct.
Okay.
Um, this, you guys already talked about background checks, however, in section three point one five. Um, you had a note here, David, specify a number. Oh, oh, it's a comment, your little comment there, um. Top scoring applicants. What, what was the number that you guys decided earlier?
We decided just to leave that open ended, where, uh, so what we did is up in the, up in the actual. Process section where, where it says, you know, when background checks have to be conducted.
Mm-hmm.
That's all we basically said was. Uh, town shall conduct a background check on the contenders on the list of three selected pursuant to. Section three point nine D and section three point one five, three point nine D says. Background investigation, this is, this is the important one. Um, prior to being included on the list, the top scoring applicants will undergo a complete background. And, and here's where we say only a sufficient number of the top scoring candidates. Necessary for consideration as determined by the board. So for, for each round, we'll determine how many. You know, we'll, we'll work with the chief and determine, and how many people need the background check, basically.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so then the final section we have to cover is uh, three point one seven, make it clear when we can begin a new list. When the old list is still active.
My cameras are right in the way of the comment, okay, so, does that mean there is no way to start a new list? Yeah, so, okay, so with this, for three point one seven, the issue here is what. We discussed with Falco in the last meeting, and what Falco said is, once you have an active list. You can't do another list until that first list expires.
And they didn't say that, he, what he said is that you can't, you can't make a new list active until the old one expires, you can.
Right, right, you can start the process, but you can't submit a new list. Until the current one expires, so the only thing that that raised in my mind is. Do we want to make the list automatically good for two years? Or should we make it good for one year? And we can extend it, right now it's two years, and we can extend it an additional twelve months. Do we wanna make it one year and then we can extend it? An additional year and then an additional year, so we still get three years. It's just we're not tied into it for two years, we're only tied into it for one year.
Yeah, well, I don't like the idea of, of doing a new list each year, um.
Me neither.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, that, that process was uh, it's time consuming to say the least.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I'm good either way, I, I'm just raising the issue. That as we have it now, if we approve a list, it's gonna be good for two years. Um.
I'm good with it being good for two years, I mean, we put the effort into it, we might as well just leave it there for two years.
Yeah, it takes a year to do it, so I'm, I'm okay with it as written as well.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that, if everyone else is.
All right.
And was that, was that the last change?
That was the last change that I saw, that um, unless you see something else.
Um, I'll scroll down quick, nope, I don't see any, oh, whoops, I'm not even to the end yet, let me.
Uh, yeah, those, the seventy. Those are the seventy percent, those are four, four, six, four, seven, four, eight.
And then uh, I don't think there's anything past that point, but I'm just making sure. Okay, there's nothing past that point, um. So I'll make a motion to approve all the changes that we've, that we've agreed on. That we didn't specifically vote on yet. As reflected in the red line, and I'll circulate the red line just to, you know, so everyone can see it to make sure that, that they don't think anything's wrong, but I've had it.
Yeah, and you know, Amy, just.
The document I've had up.
Just for your information, we uh, we voted to accept um, David's changes for, for. Is it uh, two point four, or no, three point four? That he um, he, he, he redid three point four.
Oh, this was the original.
Um, and is the total value of points now two hundred versus one hundred?
Yes, we voted for that.
Okay, good, um. So, oh, so David's changes on three point four, we're just making it more clear, the bullet.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll scroll down, so here's the, the original section I have all crossed out. And that's all I did, is I cut and pasted in that document that I sent Monday. That's all that is, is a reorganization, it's basically all the same language. I had to tweak it here and there just because of the reorganization. Substantively, it's exactly the same as it is now. Um, oh, that, that, I guess that was, well, I guess I just made a motion, but. Um, the other thing was whether we wanted to recommend. We weren't gonna make changes to this because it's up to council to this part. But did we wanna recommend to council that they work with Chief Hawk to maybe reconsider? The qualifications, um, that was the only open question. But.
I say we table that one because if, you know, we're never gonna get this through if we're. If that stays.
Oh, no, no, I, what I'm saying is, we don't, we don't try to come up with the changes, we just, it would just be our recommendation, hey. Take a look and see if you think you should change the, the requirements.
If, as long as, yeah, that's not gonna be in this rules and regulations, we can just do that on the side is what you're saying, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, okay, so my, so the motion that I just made, I'll just make it again, because I don't think I said it very well the first time anyway. So I'll move to approve all of the red line changes in this document that we've been going through and have agreed on. That have not yet been specifically approved by motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
I second that motion, and thank you David, cause you did a really great job on this, thanks.
Opposed?
Thanks.
All right, motion, uh, motion passes. All right, so um, next step says, David, you're gonna circulate that to everybody, including June. And do we wanna give a period of time for us to just review to make sure that it was everything we agreed on, or do you just wanna pass it on to uh? Have June pass it on to the council?
Well, I, I think, I think we go to Falco first. Um, because then I think Falco is gonna talk to Steve Corville, Town Council's attorney. Um. Yeah, I'm actually, I, I wish Falco was on the call, because I'm not sure what the process.
Yeah, I wish he were too. All right, well, we'll get it to Falco and um, just so Falco gets it to the town council in time for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And their next meeting is. Not this coming Monday, but the following Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, because it's.
This coming Monday, right, this, it's the second, oh, that's right, they didn't have a first Monday yet.
Yeah, so why don't I circulate this today and um. Remember, here's what I'll do, if this makes sense to everyone, I will circulate it to all of us and Falco. And if anybody has any, anything that they think is wrong. Uh, after reviewing, just reply to the whole group, including Falco. I think, just to, well, no, because that's a discussion then, we can't do that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you don't get to.
Maybe just respond, maybe just respond to you and Falco.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to all of you first. If you think there's any problems with it, just reply to me. Um, and then um, let's say by Monday, if that's okay. I hate to assign homework over the weekend, but. Um, but by end of day Monday, and then Tuesday, if I don't get any comments, I'll forward it on to Falco. And I'll CC you all on that too, so you can see the email, but. Does, does that make sense for a process?
That works, works for me.
All right, I will um, I will save this and I will circulate, um, so. Uh, I'll circulate it in the next few minutes, so you should see it soon.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, yeah, thanks for coming and getting this knocked out.
Yeah, thanks, so, sorry I wasn't here earlier, unavoidable. Appreciate everyone's hard work on it.
No problem.
Chief has a question.
Hey Dave.
Oh, yeah.
As host now, are you able to end the recording, whenever Amy and them are done, just end the recording for us, please?
Oh, okay, oh, I guess, yeah, uh. So I guess once we adjourn, I'll just stop the recording and then, and then end the meeting, is that?
Yeah, we're, we're adjourned.
Yeah, motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, thanks everyone, this, this was a big project, so.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna make sure everybody's clear that on nine twenty five, when the town approved the extension of the list of three twenty six, twenty four. That we also approve a motion to accept the rules and regulations changes that were sent up last time. I don't know if I was clear in previous board meetings, but I just wanna make sure you know that everything has been approved. That's been sent to council.
Okay, so that initial round of just getting our rules and regulations and those changes.
Like the scoring changes.
Yeah, that didn't have to do with the ordinance. Um, those have all been approved, and then now you'll be getting the second round that relates to the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Jack.
Yeah, thanks, Jack.
All right, thanks, everyone.
All right, bye.
Aye.